I'd like to call the July 17, 2018 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Seeing as I don't have any announcements this evening, is there anyone here for anything that is not currently listed on our agenda? Seeing as no, go right to item one, which is Chapter 61A, Right of First Refusal, Orange Street, with possible votes.
In your packet is a notice for taking some land out of Chapter 61, or 2.2 acres, well, actually, 67.3 plus or minus acres of land. I have had it reviewed by the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, and Open Space, and they have all recommended that you waive your right of first refusal. They see no need for this land. You did have until the September 6th to make a decision, but since no one is interested in this land, I brought it to you now. And just so that you are aware, there's going to be two more parcels coming before you from the same owner, landowner, in the same vicinity on Orange Street.
Different buyers?
I don't know. I didn't actually, I haven't looked at the purchase and sale that close to see.
The buyer's here tonight, or no?
I don't think so.
It's near me. I'm not in the better though. It's one property in between, so no direct, but it's going to be a horse facility, which is better than a whole bunch of more single-family homes, probably. And no board is interested in it. So I would move approval that we waive our right.
Second.
Made by Hal, seconded by Tim. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 The last one that you did, I just sent them a letter saying that, giving them what your intention was. This time, they actually filled out this little piece of paper and want you to sign it, so if you could, please.
Tell them that we charge 50 cents a signature?
That's a whole different kettle of fish now.
Exactly.
I think the Chase family's been there since the 18th century, town.
Yeah?
Yeah. We have had family members at the Revolutionary War.
I was gonna ask Hal if he remembers it.
I do. Moving on to item number two is a joint school committee appointment with possible votes. So, and we have the school committee here, so.
Just so you know, this is going to be, because it is an elected position, the both boards are supposed to make the appointment jointly, and it is for, to fill the vacancy for this term until the next election. So then she would have to apply, or not apply, but be elected.
Ron, thank you.
So I just wanted to call our school committee meeting to order, 7:04.
Okay. So, and, so Julie resigned before her term was up, and Ms. Brown would like to be appointed until the next election. All about anybody that wants to volunteer for any board, so. And have you been pretty actively involved with the school committee, PTO, all the others? And the boosters?
And I have a replacement, finally.
You have a replacement?
Yes.
Yeah, we actually, when Kelly came on board, and then Lisa as well, that we lost two-thirds of our normal audience for the school committee meetings. With them on board. So we're looking for new audience members for our school committee meetings, if anyone would like to join us.
I don't know if this board can help you with that. So now you intended to run for election when the seat comes up?
Not sure yet.
You're not sure?
We'll see.
Being a public official is fantastic. We all love it very much. Very rewarding, right, Tim?
It is. You're up next year, and so would that be two, two of you?
She still shoots daggers at us.
Hey, I've done my time.
You're getting out with good behavior, so.
It is like a sentence.
I think we're on a rotation, or we have, we just had one up, which is the seat that Lisa, well, Lisa will be jumping into. I'm sorry, no. The seat that Kelly just grabbed, and then up to next year, and then I think to the following year again, yeah, so.
Excellent. Well, I don't see any reason not to appoint her on our side.
No, I don't either. I know you've done the yeoman's job with fundraising and all. Any other applicants? Any other? Uh, no. Lisa's, yeah. Like I just said, it's.
Should we hold that, like, make Jillian run for a second term?
Yeah, exactly. Sherry Zetland on her way out did a good job of, at least, you know.
Who was my next door neighbor.
Yeah.
No pressure or anything at all?
There was none.
I still say we're making, intending on making Jillian run for a second term. Well, I think now that we're past an override, it may not be so painful on the committee, and maybe after a year.
If this is Douglas, it's gonna be painful.
Yeah, it's good. Public service is good. I wish you the best of luck.
Absolutely.
So.
Are you looking for a motion from someone, anyone?
Uh, yeah.
I would.
Go ahead.
I would move that we appoint Lisa Brown to the vacant position on the school committee.
I would second that.
So it was made by Dave, seconded by Tim. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
No, I think we need to do.
Oh, roll call vote.
Suzanne kindly said earlier.
It's really supposed to be both boards do the roll call vote, yeah.
Altogether?
Altogether, so.
Do we need a motion from the school committee as well, or is the one motion?
You guys are all supposed to do a roll call vote also.
But do we need a motion?
I would think so. I think you'd need a motion, too.
I don't know. I'm trying to think of the past.
We have no.
Yeah, exactly.
I think if the badge did like a nomination.
Yeah, but we've done motions in the past.
Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Lisa Brown to the vacant position on school committee.
I'll second it.
Okay, so, motion made by Jillian, seconded by Kelly.
Roll call vote?
Yes.
Dave Cortez, aye.
Hal Davis, aye.
Kevin Morris, aye.
Tim Bonner, aye.
Mike Hughes, aye.
Brett Argel, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Jillian Kinnear, aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Those are your chances of golf tournament coming up?
Tiger Open.
Tiger Open.
I am not the person running it for the first time in five years, but it is being moved from Blissful Two, which we loved, but there was a conflict, Blackstone National, September 22nd. It will all be at Blackstone National on Saturday, the 22nd, 1:30 tee-off, and it will all be there. Golf and dinner. Yep, and there'll be information.
So who is heading up?
Lynn Walker and Deb Johnson.
Yeah.
And it's all on the booster website.
I got Deb hit me up, I haven't golfed in forever, but if anyone on the board would like to talk with me.
It's very, you do not have to know how to golf. It's the best time.
When's it turn?
The 22nd, September. So, we may have a contingent.
Great.
Oh, yeah? And holding, too.
Nice.
All right, so it's old.
Perfect.
Any other questions for the school committee while we're here?
I can't think of anything off the top of my head.
Well, breathing room? You've got a little breathing room?
Yeah, I hope so. It looks like it. You know, we're still waiting to see what comes out of state, which is on the state budget, you know, but we're, you know, things sound good, you know. Still waiting to close our books and wait to hear our fishing on the state budget, but having the override is definitely lets us breathe a little bit. Now we're trying to figure out how to stretch those dollars out best we can. We've been talking to the folks from the Education Alliance about establishing the agriculture program here, so looking into that, so taking our first steps towards, you know, how to expand our programs a little bit, but still a lot of work to do there, but we're taking the first steps, so.
So with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn the school committee meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the school committee meeting on July.
I think I announced it earlier.
Seventeenth.
July 17th? At? 7:09. Really quick one.
Second.
Seconded by Kelly. Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Can we adjourn it, too?
Sure.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn a motion?
It's always an order.
I won't let you.
Fine, then. Then we'll go on to item three. Appointment to the ZBA alternate, Holland.
Jennifer's here. This is for the alternate position, which there is an opening, and I would ask that you appoint for a term ending June 30th, 2019, and she has been supported by the board.
Have we already appointed Lucino to the alternate?
Oh, he's been on for a while.
He's still, his isn't up this time?
Yeah, and then what we did was, we took Mike Fitzpatrick and moved him up from alternate up to full member.
All right. Well, thanks very much for volunteering. What made you reach out for zoning board of appeals? Have you been to a lot of their meetings, or?
I am an active member of the community, just by having been in town since '04, and I want to give back even more. I feel it's an important regulatory body, and it does fall in line with my profession as well, so I feel that it's important for me to understand not only what is required for the community, but just in general, in my profession.
Excellent.
And your profession is?
I'm a realtor.
Realtor, thank you.
Wait, with the RA key?
I am.
I know Cheryl pretty well.
Mm-hmm.
She's a nice lady.
Fantastic. She's one of the reasons I'm here.
How's the real estate market in Douglas these days?
It's appreciating, like most of the communities in the area, so, I mean, we're up about 4% in average price point from last year, so we have to be positive about that.
Yep.
Is it accelerating like Metro West?
No.
No, but it's going in the right direction.
Going rate of Boston, it's not like that either.
No, Boston's on fire.
But it's doing good for the valley, I think.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
We won't have any bust period, we'll just have a mini boom period.
No, we're not thinking about the downsides, nope. So I'd like to give back, and I think it's a really important, like I said, regulatory body in town, and I was recommended by someone on the board, and I thought it would be a great way to get involved.
We appreciate it, very much.
Thank you.
So, move approval of the appointment, so for term that we have to put in?
Ending in 2019.
Ending in 2019. Second.
It's made by Hal, seconded by Dave. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So this brings us to the SoCal Club. Increased number of events under entertainment license and possible vote. How are we doing?
I'm gonna turn it over to Maureen, since she's the one that asked to have this put on the agenda.
Thank you for making room for me tonight. Right now, we have an entertainment license that allows us six events per year. I'm asking for more events because we often donate the hall, because we are a charitable organization, like to the senior center, they have a comedian, so that cuts into our events. Fundraiser for somebody who's suffering from cancer, and they have a DJ, that cuts, so if I donate the hall twice to them, now I'm down to four. And we are in a tough situation right now, where business is very slow, and we have just installed a fire alarm system with pull stations and strobes and whatnot, and we are also going to install a sprinkler system, so I'm just trying to come up with ways to offset some of the costs for that. I'm not looking to have, I mean, we're not like a discotheque or anything, I'm just looking to maybe have karaoke, you know, things like that, that could raise a little money. I mean, if I got 20 people to come in for karaoke, I'd be happy. We're not like drawn in a huge crowd, nobody from Mendon is saying, "Let's go to the SoCal tonight," you know? Let's meet at the SoCal. So our business is pretty much people who are in town that we rely on, and things are really very, very hard for us right now, to the point where we're gonna be doing some layoffs, I'm probably gonna be one of them. But we are still trying to keep our head above water and comply with the town, what the town wants. So I was just hoping that maybe I could get a few more events per, like I said, we are installing a sprinkler system, but I'd like to maybe do karaoke every other week or something like that, to try to bring in some business to, like I say, offset some of the costs for the expenditures that we're experiencing.
I just want to add that I did speak to both chiefs, and they said that they would like to still be, if you choose to increase the amount of events, they would still like to be notified of any event, and then Fire Chief Vincent had suggested that we make it contingent upon the sprinkler system being installed.
So not increasing events until the?
Until the sprinkler system.
When is that? Go ahead, chief.
I honestly don't have a problem with increasing the events, we just still want that same notification, so based on, you know, how large of a crowd they expect, we decide, okay, do we put a detail there or not. Plus, from my perspective, look back a year, we're miles ahead of where we were last year with the fire alarm system that's functioning and a sprinkler system coming in. Once the sprinkler system is in, I'm gonna feel a lot safe, very much like the grill, all they do is put something on the sign so they know, we know that they have an event there. It takes away, I should say, it adds a huge level of comfort, knowing that the sprinklers, there's a sprinkler system, but we're miles ahead of where we were last year with the fire alarms. And as you see, the sprint, they have put plan, they have put forth the plans that the state actually said that they needed to do, that landed on my desk prior to the deadline, which was July 1st. So I'm comfortable with raising the number, as long as we're still being notified, so we're still being given an option of, you know, until the sprinkler system in, is in, do we need a detail? Does that sound fair?
Chief, I would love for there to be so many people that we needed a detail. I would love it.
And that's, and that's my point. We just still want to be notified until the sprinkler system is in.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So we have that option. I don't have a problem.
Absolutely. No problem with that.
So do we have a due date on the sprinkler, or a ballpark idea when that's going in?
Right ahead.
Exactly, I don't have it in front of me.
I have it on the, on the, what they notify.
It's like January 10th.
Final inspection and sign off from fire and building inspector. Are we talking 12:15 of this year? It says 12:15 to 1:10, so.
Yeah, I think it's this year, I'm pretty sure.
So, within the year, if the sprinkler system's in, I mean, we're good to go. But I just want to see, I want to have the option of knowing, when there's an event that has a potential to draw a lot of the public, that we, that we know, and we decide whether there's a detail. We decide, I'm not saying there's gonna be, I'm just saying, we want that option to be able to decide whether there's gonna be a detail.
Would, my idea, anyway, at least what I'm thinking, is increasing from six to 18, giving them the opportunity for once a month, you know, until the sprinkler system is in, under the stipulation of a seven-day notice in advance to the fire chief.
Absolutely.
So it's at least trying to meet you in the middle somewhere.
Six to 18, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, well, they currently have six, we give them 18, which would give them the opportunity for once a month. They've got that little wiggle room to do a karaoke night or whatever it is, you know, like I said, when you advertise it, seven-day notice to the board, and to the fire and police chiefs, make sure that they're okay with it. If Chief Vincent determines a detail's needed, a detail's needed, and we'll go from there.
That'd be great, because I'd like to still be able to offer the hall, too, to donate it to like the senior center and whomever else.
And to add to that, with the senior center, they did the comedian, to me, that's, from a public safety standpoint, I don't have a problem, I don't see a need for a detail for that. So in my opinion, that shouldn't count, but I don't know how that goes with Suzanne's regulatory stuff. From a public safety standpoint, I'm comfortable with a situation like that, but I know Suzanne looks at things from a different lens.
Right. The way that the license runs on, I meant to, did not mean to say liquor, the entertainment license is if they are a private function, meaning by invitation only, then the function and the entertainment has to be in a separate area away from the bar, and then the general open to the public, which is where the license falls under, where they have to have only the eight, if you're gonna increase it up to 18, that's when they advertise, and that's when anybody can come in. And typically, it's at the bar area, or wherever you have it, but it's, anybody can come in, it's not invitation only.
And the senior center comedian was open to the public.
Right.
That was something, the public was invited, so that was, that's my concern, was that it eats up our events, but I don't, we don't want to not be a charitable organization either, so.
So, that's the biggest thing with me, is as long as, you know, we're meeting the criteria of every event, it's advertised, we know about it, the chiefs know about it, and it's in the seven-day window, I'm okay with it.
Yep.
And that 18 number seems workable to you?
It's more than I'll probably use, so I appreciate it, yeah.
All right, so then I'll move that we increase the number of events to 18 under the entertainment license.
Second.
It was made by Mike and seconded by Tim. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I piped up the license already. I will add the number of events to 18, but if you could all just sign that, and then I'll get it to you. You can either come in and pick it up, or I'll.
I'll take it up.
Okay.
Okay. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Brings us to the liquor license, change of hours for the picket fence.
In your packet is an application from Diana Doobie for the picket fence. She would like to increase her hours so that she can sell mimosas. The state does limit the hours for opening on Sunday, so we changed the hours to reflect that. Parts of the state require the board to approve certain hours. You have approved all the hours, so the hours that she is asking for, Monday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and Sunday, 10:00 AM to 12:30 PM, are approved hours by state and you.
This is actually a decrease in the total number of hours, what you have presently.
Yeah, because we basically had the beer and malt license for Friday evenings, and because we're not open evenings anymore, don't really need it, but people were asking about the champagne and orange juice for breakfast, and it's mostly the weekend. I don't think many customers are gonna want that during the week, except the seniors, maybe, you know? But I just figured for the weekends, and I wasn't sure about the hours for Sunday, and then Suzanne and I went over it, so it's 10 o'clock, just like the lottery.
And free mimosas for selectmen, right? No.
Right, yeah.
I thought she was gonna bring samples in for a tournament.
They're in the car.
One of my favorite things of being overcharged is at the Plaza Hotel in New York. I went swimming with my wife, and the mimosas were $25.
Oh, we were only doing 20.
$20 mimosas.
20, 20, all right, $20 at the picket fence.
The going rate.
Going rate.
I think it's great.
I don't see.
Won't slow down the breakfast service, it'll always be as fast as usual.
Still be under three minutes.
It'll slow down the exit from the place.
That's why we have the ramp.
The tables may not turn over as fast, though.
That's okay, it's summer, we get the outside.
You can't have liquor outside.
No, 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 I know that, no, I know the rule. Then we need the corral, I know about the corral, I know.
So chief, if you see anybody out front with a brown bag, just.
I can't drink as I know.
It's just me.
Wow, that's a really tough guy.
Yeah.
He was just barely drinking.
Yeah, yeah.
I have no issues with what they're asking for.
Me neither. So I'll make a motion that we change the hours as presented.
Second.
Made by Mike, seconded by Tim. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This is only approved by you, we are just notifying A, B, C, C.
You're all set?
You're all set.
Thank you.
Do I need?
Cheers.
Thank you. Now, do I need the new license?
I'll give that to you.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Okay. So should I skip over, well, I can't really skip over item six.
I know six is one.
I do.
Well, you can skip over, because.
I'd have to skip over seven, too.
That's okay.
Yeah, because he's not here either.
So you can move to item eight.
Why are you skipping six? Because she's not here?
She's not here.
You want to do eight?
Sure. So, we're gonna just put a hold on six and seven, and move to item eight, which is annual appointments, insurance advisory committee, and possible votes.
The insurance advisor committee are appointed by individuals who represent the different bargaining units or employees, so we don't usually ask them to come in, and we don't get applications from them, thank you. So, for right now, we have John Allard, who will be representing the custodial collective bargaining unit, and Charlene DeLuca, who will be representing the cafeteria collective bargaining unit. We do still have a few openings that we're trying to fill on this committee, but we will be working on that, and I'll bring them to you when I get them.
So I'll move that we appoint both those individuals for term ending June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Made by Mike, seconded by Dave. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Brings us to nine, annual appointments, Board of Health and Conservation Commission, and possible votes.
I know Gary's here. There was going to be one, and Mr. Skinner's here, but I thought Dave McCollum was going to be here for the Board of Health, so I guess, I don't know, you can do CONCOM.
I have no issues with, do we have two out of the three candidates here?
Yeah, I mean, it's on the agenda.
Mr. Stevens withdrew his name.
Okay.
He's going to, he's realized that he's going to be too busy with work, and then the other person that we have for this committee would be Mr. Vecchione, who is in the audience.
Mr. Vecchione?
Is it Vecchione or Vaschoni?
Vecchione.
Okay.
Are we voting for two?
This is for CONCOM.
Yeah, I'm a little confused. Yes, thank you.
Well, we have, we have two board, different boards that you're talking about tonight, Board of Health.
Yeah.
And CONCOM. Mr. Vecchione wants to be appointed to CONCOM.
Okay.
On the Board of Health, it was.
Yeah, have a seat, please.
Actually, I also requested to be on the Grammar School Reuse Committee, too. I don't know if you handled that or not, but.
Again, I, they have to decide whether or not they're gonna continue that or disband it. They're, they're working on that right now.
If we choose to continue it, we'll have you come back in.
I've got a great idea for it.
Under the Board of Health?
Well, it's new.
You have Mr. Skinner in the back there, but Mr. McCollum, who is an incumbent, wanted You have Mr. Skinner in the back there, but Mr. McCollum, who is an incumbent, wanted to be appointed, and he told Kristen that he would be here tonight. So because he's not here yet, I was thinking you could move to the CONCOM first.
So we'll go through the CONCOM part of it. If he's not here by the conclusion of that, we're going to move forward to Board of Health.
Yep.
Alright, so Conservation Commission, huh? I'm sorry, because we did things out of order, I gotta dig through my... So how long have you been in town?
Fifty-eight years.
Fifty-eight years, wow. And what made you want to join Conservation?
Well, I just feel like, you know, the typical guy who wants to give back, I have a lot of experience with that. I've actually done a lot of installations, so, you know, I know that board inside and out, as far as the workings of the actual applications that people go for, and, you know, culvert pipes and wetlands, delineations, and all that stuff. So, you know, I've got a good, a lot of experience, and...
How do you feel about Eagle Scout projects?
I love them. But I'm a little too old for Eagle Scouts, so...
Alright, just curious. Well, I mean, I'm, it's been, I have to say, it's nice to actually see people volunteering for boards and committees now.
Absolutely.
So, and I know that getting people to join any of these, we almost had to hold them hostage in certain cases, to be like, really, just...
Well, when I found out there was no pay, I, I had the second thoughts, but...
Wait a minute, there's no pay?
No.
Personal satisfaction is the highest pay you can get.
The feeling of giving back to your community is payment, no?
I can't tell you how close I came to not coming tonight.
You're the nurse. You're my vote, just for sheer honesty, my friend. So, well, I mean, I don't see any, I have no issues with moving forward with putting him onto Conservation.
Neither do I.
I'd just be looking for a motion from one of you fine gentlemen.
And I would ask that you do it for a term ending 2021.
Is it just one opening?
No, there's, there's, there's five.
Okay, so... Can you find five other friends that want to do this?
Mike Greco has to be...
I don't think I have five friends.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mike Greco is going to be, you'll need to reappoint him also.
Okay.
He was one of the ones, I'm sorry.
I didn't see that on my agenda, Suzanne.
It is, it is, it's...
Well, it's very deep into the piles.
Mike Greco has turned up, stated he would like to be reappointed.
Reappointed, okay.
I just read that, and that's why I reminded her.
So you're going to reappoint Mr. Greco and appoint Mr. Vecchione for a term ending 2021.
Ninety-six.
Holy cow. Let me take it six months at a time. Hey, I do have a question before you...
Sure.
Go ahead and, you know, ruin my life, I mean, appoint me. Is, who's taking over for the chair? Who's going to be doing that?
Well, I think they'd have to do a reorg.
They would have to reorg.
They would do it.
The Conservation Commission would make that decision.
So if you vote me in, I mean, do I get fed right to the fire, or right to the lions, or is there like a warm-up period, or...
Oh, you're a regular member.
I'm just right in there, huh?
Yeah, you go in, and I think the first meeting that you guys will have will be a reorganizational meeting, where they'll determine a chair, vice-chair.
Yep.
No initiation.
And do you know when that is, or it meets every two, two, two times a month, is that it?
Whoever's acting chair now would, would get in touch with you, and it's scheduled through the clerk, Maria LaJoy. She's, helps them out in the community development office.
I think it'll probably, I don't think you're going to be fed to the fire. I think that fresh blood that's going in there is exactly what they need. I think it's kind of a reflective period for the Board of, for Conservation right now. So, I mean, it's an opportunity to change the ways they've been doing some of the things, and, you know, bring some ideas to the table.
You sure you guys are ready for that?
Not much shocks me.
Can I just ask a procedural question? So there are two seats that have expired in 2018, and has it been the custom of the town that people serve until their replacement is named? Or do they stop attending meetings when their term expires?
Usually, they stop attending meetings when their term expires.
So there is no need to vise one member out over the other in order to fill it with another?
Mike would know, he was the first selectman ever in town.
The age jokes are coming fast up there.
Was that 1798, I think? Could have happened. You look like you got a question, Tim?
Well, I, I...
I'm waiting for the...
But we're usually, excuse me, I think...
It never ends.
We usually reappoint people before their term expires if they want to be reappointed. In this case, with Mike Greco, we haven't.
And I want to clarify the terms. It would be, Mike Greco would be 2021. The open terms would be, or even Linda, you can pick a term for any, for Gary. You can do 2021, you can stagger it and do him. It's up to you.
Considering how difficult it is to get people, it probably makes sense to stagger it.
Well, you can't stagger it with, with Mike, because you're reappointing...
No, you're reappointing Mike to 2021. But Gary, you can stagger, because you've got...
So it's up to...
Tracy's...
If I make it three months, I'll be impressed with myself, so three years, you know...
Tracy's here now.
There's Tracy.
So Tracy is...
Because I know small-town, you know, dynamics.
Tracy's 2020, Mike Greco would be 21, so you could do Gary for 2019, and then that would stagger it, and then they would be three-year terms.
That works.
Whatever you guys are comfortable with.
Alright, so we need kind of a dual motion. One appointing, reappointing Mike until 2021, and the one appointing this gentleman until 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Do you have anything to add, Tracy?
No, I thought he was on at 7:40.
Talk to the chair.
It's estimates.
It's all my fault.
There's a disclaimer on my minutes on the agenda.
We haven't reviewed the application at the CONCOM yet. We've not been able to get a quorum.
It's been tricky.
Will there be a quorum at my appointment, or...
I think you would actually make it a quorum.
Make it a quorum, right.
Is that about how that would work, Tracy?
Majority of sitting members is one, so...
Would be two.
It's not one, it's a failed motion. It would have to be two.
Right, so if he's appointed, you'd have three sitting members, so it would be two.
Correct, so two would be for the pass motion.
Alright, do you have any objections to us moving forward on this, Tracy?
Whatever you would like to do, Mr. Chair.
Well, I'm not trying to step on toes. I want to make sure everybody's comfortable and happy with, with where we go, with it. Do you need time to review his application?
No, whatever your pleasure is.
Alright.
Do we have a motion that's been seconded?
Alright, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Stay on it longer than six months, too.
You want to hear it?
Yeah.
I think that you should take the building that has the Chinese food place, take that by eminent domain, make a parking lot right in front of it, open that up right to the building, and have it be the talk of the town.
So take out that building with hot walks, turn that into public, like a what, public parking lot?
Public parking, like they have at Unibank in Whitemsville. There's minimal wetlands there, you could replicate them somewhere else.
And then what would you do with the actual grammar school itself?
Well, you could use it for town offices, or you could rent it out for mixed use, you could have apartments and, you know, retail or office, and, but I think if you open that up from Main Street right to that building, it would be the town, a new town square, if you want to call it that. I've been thinking about that since I was 20, and I think it can be done. I think it could be done readily. Could be a shame to have that building go to waste.
Agreed, so, it's food for thought.
Yep.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Remember, we heard that idea, though.
I won't forget. And we're going to ask you to come back in in three months and make sure you're still on CONCOM.
Yeah. Thank you.
Alright, so Board of Health.
I like that.
Board of Health is Robert Brazo and David McCollum are both up for reappointment. It's a three-year term, and we have one applicant, Mr. Skinner, here.
Who's Mr. Skinner?
A real newbie.
A real newbie?
A real... A few weeks in town, about forty years in Mendenham.
You're forty years in Mendenham? Nice. And how long in Douglas?
While I was in Mendenham, I served on the bylaws review committee for several years. I helped them start their taxation aid committee, which is something, I understand, this town does not have, in that you get donations, and then distribute the donations to people who need help with taxes.
That's a good idea.
And also, and it's allowed by state law, at your, at your instigation to set it up. And I also served for a brief time on a master planning committee.
Nice.
In terms of why am I qualified for the Board of Health? It's your risk.
It's our risk.
Hopefully, you're healthy, maybe that's good.
Well, I hope that I'm healthy for a while, but one never knows. Ten minutes, ten years, who knows?
Man plans, God laughs, right?
Yeah.
The incumbents are not here.
No, and I, well, Mr. Brazo couldn't make it, he had a emerg, medical emergency. Mr. McCollum just walked in.
I've been dabbling on here.
No?
So what made you move out of Mendenham after forty years to Douglas?
Upper mobility, obviously.
Obviously.
Silly man.
Wanted a stronger nightlife.
It's quiet, it's rural, and there are real animals out here. No, I don't mean the people, I mean the animals.
Got some of those, too, maybe.
If you knew where I lived, you'd understand why I moved to the country.
So where were you in Mendenham?
Matter of fact, you do know where I lived. You know where the Poppin' Cork is?
Yes.
There are four things on the corners, Poppin' Cork, church, gas station, and my house.
Oh, you know right where it is.
Yes. All traffic, day and night, sirens, couldn't get out of the driveway, decided to retire.
Well, we don't even have a stoplight, so you're doing okay.
Exactly.
We moved to South Street, which is quiet.
Nice. Alright, Mr. McCollum, you want to come up and grab a seat?
Good.
How are you doing?
Good.
Alright. And how long have you served on the Board of Health?
Since 1994.
How's it running? The board?
Pretty good.
In your eyes?
Pretty good.
Okay.
Kind of fresh out of questions.
Well, it's a tricky thing, right?
It is.
Two incumbents and a gentleman who wants to volunteer.
Gentleman with an impressive resume.
Yeah.
Yeah, just looking at that. Any further questions?
No, it's tough decisions. It's about how I look at it, but, I mean, I know we're trying to get fresh blood into all of these different boards and bodies, and different perspectives and views, and not that we don't appreciate the people that have been sitting, but, you know, new ideas are always welcome, and I like that taxation idea that you come up with. So, I mean, I think that's going to be something that we'll look at on a future agenda of probably ask you to come in and sit down and tell us a little bit more about that.
Your administrator and I have chatted briefly about it previously.
You chat with a lot of people. You're very chatty.
My jaw hurts.
I don't know, do we have any thoughts or instincts, or... I am rather impressed with the gentleman that moved from the Poppin' Cork. So, and I do appreciate the years of service that you've been doing, Mr. McCollum, you've done a very good job as well, so it's a tough...
Well, I've been chairman for two years, actually three years, I've done an awful lot. I basically oversee the transfer station, I'm up there every week. I also have done extremely an awful lot for the board, I've got phone calls at four o'clock in the morning to go out for accidents that were on Route 16 with Dunkin' Donuts. I have done many, many things throughout my time, it's, I have never sat, I've gone to more schoolings that was asked upon, I've gotten all my proper licensing, very much into, and always have been, all these years, for the Board of Health. Very interested in making sure that we maintain a very good Board of Health, where we, we take care of the town health-wise, and we also basically make sure that the people that are working for us are doing the best of their abilities. I've just sent out a memo to the board members and to our secretary, basically asking her to take some of the courses that I've taken in the past, and that the other board members either have or haven't, but we, I'd like to see where even the people that are working at the Board of Health maintain and improve what their responsibilities are. But I've been on a long time, too, so I don't have a problem stepping aside. I've been, I taught at Blackstone Valley for 32 years, I ran that shop for 13, like I said, I've been very involved in the Board of Health an awful lot, and I enjoy every minute of it.
Appreciate your candor, thank you.
So how do we feel, gentlemen?
I know we've been trying to get new blood into the different boards.
Three people, one opening, huh?
Yep.
No, three people, two openings.
Two openings, right.
The third was Mr. Brazo, who's the current vice-chair. He had a medical emergency, he couldn't come.
Do we have to make this tonight? I mean, my gut would be...
You guys can do whatever you want, you're the chair.
My gut would be to reappoint the two that were here, but if there was a medical emergency, I'd like to hear from Mr. Brazo as well.
See, I think it's unfair, because my gut would be to go with, with your gut is going, but if he did have a medical emergency, I would agree.
I know, our job's to sit in the hot seat, but, you know, my decision isn't really based on the attendance.
It's rare that we have more people.
Think of it as, if you want, I'll, I'll definitely step aside. I've donated many, many years, and I'll gladly step aside, not a problem.
Thank you for your time.
Well...
It makes it easier.
Doesn't make it easier. In fairness, I'll make the motion then. Repoint Mr. Brazo and to welcome Mr. Skinner to the Board of Health.
I'll second that motion.
And both for a term ending 2021.
Ending the term 2021.
Well, alright. Made by Mike, seconded by Tim, is there any...
Is it the other way around?
Made by Tim, seconded by Mike.
No.
Any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skinner.
It's a good time, welcome, we appreciate it.
I was just going to say that.
We can do the poll petition now.
Oh, yep, it made it simple. Alright, so we at 7:40?
We can do the poll petition.
Okay, so...
Read the whole thing if you want. Sorry, those are types of humor. Hear ye, hear ye, all ye assembled to the divine poll petition.
I screw these up every time. I really do. Just, I'm just going to read it. That's what I'm going to do. And if you guys don't like it, too bad. If it's out of order, rule me out of order. Massachusetts Electric Company requests permission to locate manholes, wires, and ducts, including the necessary sustaining and protective fixtures along and across the following public way. Crescent Lane. National Grid requests installing new pole splice box 1150 on the west side of Crescent Lane, approximately 100 feet south of existing pad 11. Install new two-to-three-inch conduit from new pole splice box 1150 and continue across, and continue east across Crescent Lane on private property to feed a new house. I'm not getting into the wherefore it praise.
I'm sorry, could you read that again?
I cannot. You get one shot at it, my friend. So, come on up, sir.
Now, I was told Christopher was going to be here, you're Mike, though, right?
Yeah.
Mike Fraser.
I have an emergency as well.
I don't need to open or close anything on this, right?
You just opened it.
Alright, it's all open. How are we doing?
Very good, yeah.
Good. So, I'm assuming on the private property part, is it, like, anybody contesting this, going up, any problems, issues, concerns?
No, everyone has been notified, and no one has said anything.
That's pretty much straightforward as presented, without all the we pray, all this happy stuff, right?
Yep.
I don't have any questions, we've done so many of these, they're pretty straightforward.
You need to figure out if there are any questions in the audience.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions regarding this? Seeing none. Seeing none.
Then I move that we closed the hearing. Second.
Made by Mike, seconded by Dave. Any further discussion? Roll call vote? No? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
I move that we approve the poll petition as presented.
I'll second that.
Made by Mike, seconded by Tim. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Thank you. Did a wonderful job.
Thanks, thanks.
You too, Kevin.
And the sign is...
You did great job.
Oh, thank you.
There's only two this time.
Thank you very much.
I try hard.
All right.
Is this legal?
I'll move on to item 10.
I'm doing it.
Let's skip over item six as well, right?
I do not see Ms. Hardy here still, so...
Can do 10.
Just pass over.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, so an order of taking and possible votes.
Boy, what's the kill?
What's this property here, what's the background on this one a little bit?
This is adjacent to the river, if I remember. My understanding was the recommendation of the town engineer was to pass over this item tonight because...
The second part of it, there's actually two parts. There's kind of like three parts, actually. The first part is Gilboa Street. That was for us to clean up after, this is what Rich Bowen has sent us. And then the next part after that was the streeting. Order of taking for Brookside and Royal Crest, that part we're going to pass over.
Would it make sense to pass over on all of 10 until our town engineer is here?
No, not really, because the first piece, I stand corrected. We focused on the second piece all day today, but this first piece, this is a remainder of land at the corner there with this long tortured history. It was supposed to have been devised as part of the whole mill transaction years ago. It didn't make the list of properties that was exchanged, and it kind of has sat out there as an orphan. Taxes have been due to the last owner of record, which goes back to the Schuster's. Attempt has been made to reach the heirs without success, so this is the option to follow, to bring the land into the town's holdings.
So we won't be paying out the $4,300 unless somebody makes a claim for it?
I think the $4,300 is the value foregone of the taxes that we're due and will not be like it.
Works for me.
I move we approve the order of taking as presented to the board.
Second.
Made by Hal, seconded by Dave. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
I have three copies here, please.
Okay. Health insurance policy update, second reading. Any changes from the first reading?
No, sir.
Okay. Wallem Lake Road discussion. No parking, standing, stopping.
Hey, chief.
How are we doing, chief? Are we keeping entertained today?
Always entertained.
Excellent.
All right, then. So we already have some signs up on that road. And to be honest with you, this summer so far, other than the early morning of July 4th, we've been in pretty good shape. Since the single closure policy has been in effect, there was, on the 4th of July, there was just so much traffic coming in, you just couldn't keep up with it. And as far as, you know, once they opened up and the cars started moving in, we were able to move that traffic, but it was, they were lined up from Wallem Lake Road to the entrance. So once they opened up and we got everybody in there and they finally closed, we were in good shape, but the cars were still coming. You know, people are still coming, they don't know it's closed. It was at one point in time, we probably had 150 cars at the center of town between the highway department and family convenience, but it took us probably about an hour maybe to disperse all of them and get them moved along. And once it closed up, and, you know, we were in good shape, but...
They opened early, chief.
They did. The first car, I think the guy sat on the overnight shift, it was between 2:30 and 3:00 in the morning.
That's denunciation.
People want to get in there, yeah, and they're, so probably around 5:30, 6:00, they were out to Wallem Lake Road, and then the influx just started coming, because, I mean, people realized that it's going to close soon. And I think by 7:40, they had everybody in there, and right around 8:00, it was closed. But probably from 5:30 to 7:40, 7:45, we had four guys on, we put some extra guys on. We had four of our people up there. EPOs had one of their guys down there, and they had a couple of details, and DCR had people, but they were getting people in, and once they closed, it's having people at the end, but you still got all those people in line that are, that are all still coming. So once you get them turned away, I mean, like I said, it took about an hour, but other than the 4th of July, everything has been pretty smooth up there. And when we talk about signs, we have the no parking signs up there, and we put those in a couple of years ago when we were still fighting for the single closure, because that's when we had a lot of the problems, because people were parking and waiting. Now with the single closure, it's going to take us a little while, 45 minutes to an hour, before we get all those people out of there. But there's just so many people, it would, it would be more of an issue for us. It's easier to have four guys down there moving them along than, because you don't have people parking. It's not like, you know, they want to argue with you because they say, well, they're waiting, they said that we could get in. Well, that's not the case anymore. It's closed, so there's really no reason for you to park there. To, to take the 10 minutes to cite somebody for a $5 parking violation, it really doesn't make sense. You need the manpower that you're able to put down there to move the cars and to keep the traffic moving. So the signs are great.
Right.
But even on the, on the 4th of July, we know what's going to happen on that day. So we need to have our people down there and in place to keep cars off the bridge. And we, we know that for that, you know, one to two hours, while people are getting in there, we're going to have to deal with that.
The biggest thing I wanted to hear is that it was better, and it does sound like it's much better.
There's no doubt. We've come leaps and bounds since we started this with the single closures, there's no doubt about it.
And it's, one of the Labor Day might be the next...
It might be, it might, and even, you know, you, the 4th of July, you know, is a given because people start coming really early, so they're, they're out to the road by the time the park staff even get there. So you know you're going to deal with that. Weekends, you might get a nice, even these nice days, they don't all come at once. All the people aren't coming very early, so it's a steady flow, but they're not backed out onto the street. They're getting in there at a reasonable time, and even when it does reach capacity, it closes for the day, they put the barricades up, and you don't have all those people at once. That's why you don't have the line out to the, you know, out to where we had it the first time on the 4th of July. So it's been, you know, so much better. I really have no complaints, and I know, we know that we're going to deal with that for a couple hours on the 4th of July. There's just that many people coming in, you can't stop them, and you, there's no place to put them, but in the park or move them along.
Kind of the nature of the beast, and I mean, those of us that have been in town long enough now, you kind of expect it. It is light years better than what it was prior to the single park closure, I think.
A lot of two days versus, you know...
There's no doubt about it. We were just talking about that today, I was talking about it with the sergeant. You look where we came from, from day after, weekend after weekend of dealing with that, having to put extra people on, have to chase people around because it was causing a problem for the people on Wallem Lake Road, to where we are now, where we know, okay, 4th of July, we're going to deal with it for a couple of hours, but we'll get it cleared up, so...
Yeah, the signage on the road is adequate for what you need to do.
I think the signage is adequate, because, like I said, there, on the 4th of July, they're, they're waiting in line, the line's already progressed, but there's, we don't have the people parking there like we, like we had it before, prior to putting up those signs, before we had the single closure. So the signage, I think, is adequate. Yeah, I, I mean, I think things are good. I, I think we prepared well this year. We know if it's going to be a nice 4th of July, what we're going to be dealing with. So, you know, we put a couple extra guys on, we work with the state police, we work at the EPOs, DCR, everybody down there has been good. We just have to put a plan in place, and like I said, once we get everybody moving and once it closes, we get the signs up, and it's easier for us to move them along.
Yeah, I think the digital sign being in use on North Street hindered us a little bit, so if we don't have something like that going on, it would help. But it's like on social media, the people that were complaining about it, I'm like, it's hot, we live near water, you know, it's much better than it was. It's a couple hours of an inconvenience, you know, just kind of plan accordingly and be patient.
Yeah.
You know, and I mean, I think overall, I haven't heard of any incidents that have happened up at the lake.
No, a couple minor things, but nothing like it's, it's used to be, and again, you know, the state has jurisdiction in there. If something comes in, we go, you know, we'll call the barracks, let them know if they have a car available, we'll send the car. If we can handle it before they get there, we'll back them off. It's usually minor stuff, but from where we were to where we are now, I'm very happy with it.
Good. Like hearing that.
Yeah. So I don't think we need to take any action on this at all.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Yeah, and I'll keep you posted as things go, move on, but the weekend's been fairly good with the nice weather. Like I said, they, they've closed a couple times, but it's been over a period of time. It's not that serious influx, so we're in good shape.
VJ Day in Rhode Island?
There is a VJ Day, yeah. It's like a Tuesday, isn't it?
I think so.
Yeah, that's usually another big day.
Yeah.
Governor's Bay Day.
Governor's Bay Day.
Is the politically correct term for...
Oh, excuse me.
...celebrated by the state.
Yeah, that's another big day down there, and that usually depends on, on the weather too. You have to watch the weather forecast. If it's a nice day, it has potential to fill up quickly, but we'll prepare for it.
I think the weather's been so damn hot, you don't dare do anything at all.
Yeah.
You're going to melt anyway, so...
Also heard that because we had raised, or the state had raised the fees, that the visitors or the clientele is more of a family, more, yeah, more stable attendee or visitor.
That's what they're saying, yeah.
You know, the two things that we had identified some time ago as the solutions were that and that, and it's great.
And I know you still, yeah, I know they're looking at increasing, there's talk about increasing it again, and you know, when you read the articles, you know, people are calling residents and, you know, Massachusetts people are calling for out-of-state cars to pay, to pay more, so whatever the legislature decides to do, I mean, that's up to them, but I think we're in a lot better shape than we were when we first started.
Yeah, I mean, it's not anything that's unheard of. I mean, hopefully the legislator, legislature pays attention to it, because if you go to Connecticut, they see a mass plate, you pay twice as much.
Yeah.
It's just the way that it works, so it, it's not an entirely bad thing, but it's kind of keeping people to focus on resources in their own state. And Mr. Wojcik living where he does, he's used to summertime crowds jamming up roads, so...
He doesn't mind paying two, three times if you're coming over from Rhode Island either.
Yeah, it's the way that it works. Thank you, chief.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, chief.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right, so one-day entertainment license for Dynamic Douglas Family Fund and possible votes.
Yes, Family Fund Day has submitted an application, well, Dynamic Douglas has submitted an application for a one-day entertainment license for Family Fund Day at Soldier's Field on Saturday, August 18th, from 11:00 to 4:30 p.m. They, they plan to have DJs with speakers, that's why they need the entertainment license, not Sunday. There is a $10 fee that if you wish, you can waive. Dynamic Douglas has submitted a property use form, which they have signed off by the town administrator, the police, police chief, police and fire chiefs. The recreation committee asked that the trash be picked up after the event. Donna has told me that, and she has told recreation that GBI is donating the use of a 15-yard roll-off trash dumpster.
Yes, and also Al's rubbish service.
Right.
Will be providing trash service.
No rap music? No, just kidding.
I'm actually not having a DJ, we're actually having a sound system, and we're working on getting my FM 101.3 to provide a possible DJ service, but that's in the works, and I'm still working on it now, so, but that's why I wanted to file the entertainment license ahead of time, so...
Chance favors the prepared mind, right?
Yes.
I don't see any issues with it.
No, speaking for the rec commission, we've spoken about the field and, you know, protection of it being the infield area and the trash cleanup and...
Yes.
Are you bringing down porta-potties or...
GBI is donating, providing those to, for us, so...
Certainly love to see the field used.
Both fields, actually, both fields will be used, so, both fields will be used, so, yes.
And I would waive the $10 fee too.
Are you making a motion?
I can. Make a motion that we waive the $10 fee for the one-day entertainment license as presented in our pack-up, to wish the good people of Dynamic Douglas...
Approve the license.
And to approve the license and to wishing the best with this event.
I'll second all of that.
Oh, thank you. I do, I would like to request one thing, though. We do have two wonderful...
Waste of the last...
Before, okay, I know you want to make, I know you want to make a motion. Well, you don't make the motion, then I'll ask, or has it? Who made the second?
Dave.
Okay.
Made by Tim and seconded by Dave. Any further discussion? I just want to go on the record that Mr. Bonan is waiving an opportunity for revenue for the town. I'm just throwing it out there.
Lovely. Mr. Bonan is a wonderful man. What? I want to say that on record?
We're not even taking a vote, I'm done.
And Mr. Morris is a wonderful man.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So I do have one request. I have two wonderful Board of Selectmen members that have already agreed to be Dunk Tank Stars, so I'm wondering if maybe perhaps Mr. Hughes, Mr. Davis, Mr. Cortez would like to be part of the Dunk Tank Stars.
I am out of town that day.
Okay.
I am out of town too.
August 18th.
August what?
August 18th.
August 18th.
I have Senator Fatman being a Dunk Tank Star.
I believe I could serve as another potential donkey if you wish.
Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Everybody likes me.
Unfortunately, I'm going to be out of town, because I would love to see this.
Administrator Bowen, are you available?
Mr. Wojcik?
I'll do anything my board asks me to do.
I'm Mr. Wojcik, I'm sorry.
Oh, I see another motion coming.
I move.
That was the 18th.
The August 18th?
I may be able to as well if I...
As long as they don't need to.
If my plans change, I'll...
If your plans change.
Somebody going to take pictures?
Yes, I'm going to have, I've already had requests from a couple people to be taking pictures, so, yes.
Do you know we have...
If you know of anybody, well, we also have the wonderful chief, fire chief and police chief that have also agreed that they will also be participating in the Dunk Tank Stars, so, and we have a few good firemen that, Chief Vincent. So anything you guys can do to help us would be...
Kent, you're not rocking a mankini, are you? No? All right.
All right, I will fill this out.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, and Suzanne, I appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Anybody from school committee want to volunteer for this? No?
Too funny.
Okay, so we're on to approved minutes for the June 5th, 2018 meeting.
What was the...
What happened here, was somebody sucking on the licenses? Maybe.
That was the meeting that Mr. Cortez did an excellent job of running.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. High praise indeed, considering the source.
So I'll gladly make a motion to approve those minutes.
Wait a minute, is that the meeting that I got appointed to something that I probably shouldn't have been appointed to?
Quite possibly.
It was unanimous.
Because you were absent.
You know the rules.
Mr. Bonan had the same opportunity, they spoke water.
I'm looking at numbers five and stuff right now.
I think that we should abstain from this and protest the minutes on this completely.
So I make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Any thoughts on this, Tim? No? Made by Mike, seconded by Hal, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Your report, Mr. Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, it's been a while, so I'm gonna go through quite a few items as quickly as I can. The first is an announcement. For members of our boards and commissions, there is a session being held by the Office of the Inspector General on knowing your responsibilities. It's a three-hour training. I believe they will cover Open Meetings Act, access to public records, ethics, and other aspects of being a successful member of a board or commission. That will be Wednesday, July 25th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. It'll be held at Clark University in the Grace Conference Room of the Higgins Building at 950 Main Street in Worcester. These things are usually, get high praise because it's worthwhile training, especially for people who are new. Secondly, the North Street Bridge Project has come to a conclusion. I think everybody in town knows that, they've seen the road reopened. We're in the process of closing out the transaction. I think we're gonna be slightly over the bid price, but not as much as was invoiced by the contractor. There's been a lot of correspondence back and forth about the components of price. We did find a larger-than-expected amount of unsuitable fill at the bottom of the culvert. So there were voids and other things that would have, over time, undermined the stability of the new construction. So that was all removed and also had to be replaced. In order to cover those costs, a number of other items, pardon me, were analyzed by the town engineer to bring it back towards the bid price. So we're gonna be less than 10% over on this, and it's well worth it because the work that was done was high-quality. And they explored what was under there with the express purpose of building a solid project. So we're perfectly happy to close out the project as it stands.
Wasn't worth replacing the railings there, which looked a little old?
I don't think the total conclusion on North Street Bridge has been reached yet. I think there's thoughts that we want people to be able to walk on either side of it with new railings. And the recommendation from the highway superintendent is to revisit the intersection as a, as a candidate for a tip, the so-called Transportation Improvement Project List with the county through the state. Which is a good, solid recommendation to revisit the entire layout of that intersection and improve it. The taking that you approved tonight is for that slab of property that's just over the bridge into the right-hand side if you were gonna take a right-hand turn onto Gilboa. So we'd have some dominion over that and could parlay that into, you know, site control for improvements on the bridge. My third item is North Village. Has been some discussion at the zoning board, and as you know, you as a board entered into an agreement with the developer, a memorandum of understanding that gives effect to certain aspects of the comprehensive permit that was approved for the 40B project. So our update for you, and Fire Chief gets the double-dip devil dog award for the day. The concept here has been how do we get sufficient flow for fire suppression efforts in a part of town where we're serving a fairly densely populated area with an eight-inch water main? And originally in the comprehensive permit and in your MOU, there's conversation around possibility of a tank, the possibility of a booster station to pump the water. And then there's always been this notion lying out there of replacing the eight-inch main and the 12-inch main, which is an expensive and disruptive undertaking. Giving the chief credit because today, at a second meeting of a group of people who've been involved with this, the towns engineer, the projects engineer, the project proponents, and Colin from the Water Commissioners and the chief. The possibility has been raised of using cisterns as an alternative source for storing firewater that won't be part of the potable water supply to draw upon to get the volume necessary to put out a structure fire without having to go through those other options, which, many of which were ruled out. So we really were looking at a storage tank, but the storage tank would have to connect to the potable water supply. And that's not an option because the town already has maxed out the number of days of supply of water it's holding in its tanks. So you recommended from two to five, two being the minimum, five being the maximum. Douglas is at five days' worth of water already in the tanks that it has. So to build another tank would take you over that. You can't hook that up as a separate fire suppression system because you would need to have done a whole bunch of improvements under the ground that you didn't do when you were building the 40B. So the notion of a cistern, or a couple of cisterns up there that will hold sufficient volume, might be the single most cost-effective solution that we've pursued to this point. So the party's left today's meeting looking at the options. I think the chief's gonna be working up a briefing on how much water he needs and the equipment that he would need to be able to get at that water and make it work. And on their side, they're looking at where it could be, one or two cisterns could be located. The only other solution that was floated today was the notion of having a pump station somewhere on North Street to take the water up and then to improve the line to 12 inches up to the point of that pump station. Well, that, it starts to turn into a pretty expensive project first and foremost, and it's very delayed because we don't own, we, the town, don't own a whole lot of property on either side of North Street. So there would be a taking involved, we would have to go to town meeting, and then all of the design that would be required to make sure the pump was actually gonna work as designed. Plus the construction of a 12-inch line from our existing cut in the asphalt where we just finished working at Northern Gilboa and bringing it up the hill. So really, the cistern is probably our most live option, and there will be a briefing to the zoning board for their review on August 8th, and it'll be coming back to you for consideration. An amendment to the MOU would be required to make this work.
If it wasn't for the cost, would the pump and the improvements in the line be the best alternative for the town?
The very best. I mean, if we were Lexington or Dover or some other community that spend money a little bit more, more aggressively, would be to replace the entire eight-inch line with a 12-inch line.
That'd be a possible mass works grant.
It would be, and I think in the future, selectmen, that's what we have to do. It really is what we have to do. For the time being, this allows this project to move forward on its timeframe.
So we could still potentially do the other.
I think you have to. This is part of the economic development discussion, but that 12-inch main has to be run down both sides of that corner of town. Where you can loop into any industrial development you do in the rear at the prime.
Mass works, is that quarterly or semi-annually? So maybe that.
It's on a rolling basis.
Yeah, see if we could.
I think taking these proposals that have been only partially scratched out for capital improvement committee discussions really need to be fleshed out a lot before they're ready for prime time and the mass works process. We really gotta get the.
Because of all the takings for the state forest, supposedly we had some informal encouragement that the state would look favorably upon other economic development projects for the town. So maybe this is one that we could.
We're in a little bit better of a position with some of those things, too, where we could use Chapter 90 and some of our own money. And then look into getting a mass works grant where we have skin in the game. So I think that it makes us more favorable in that avenue.
So the next item on my list is procurement, just to update the board and the public on where we are after town meeting has been finished. The asphalt hot, so-called hot box, which is just, it is what it sounds like. It's a box that's heated with a burner and it keeps the asphalt hot once you get it from a plant. It's used for patching potholes with a more durable material. We came in about $2,000 under the budget for that item. Mr. Ferno has reserved our place. We ended up going with a manufacturer called KM, which makes a very, it's actually kind of a, a nice thing. They were the lowest bidder by $50. But we got three different bids, so we had pretty robust competition. This particular product is made in the Midwest, it's made in America, and it's heavy-duty. The undercarriage is, you know, channel iron and it's really good, really good piece of equipment. Next, we have the two snowplows, one-ton snowplows. We went out, our original, after we worked the numbers from the bid documents, was that we're gonna save about $28,000. It's more like 21 and change that we're gonna be under budget. But again, the competition generated a robust result. The low bidder was actually low as a result of giving us a much more generous price for our used trucks and the used plows associated with them. So that was a, a good process for the town. The ambulance bids will be opened this week. They are due Thursday at 2:00. All the bidders have been notified of that. We have gotten two so far from reputable providers. Obviously, we won't open them until the position, the bid is closed. The last thing I want to talk about is we engage in an RFP process for information technology services. We get an outside firm to work with the staff here. We've been using an intermunicipal agreement and sharing an IT administrator with the town of Northbridge, and it just, we weren't getting the kind of time and engagement that we really needed. It's not that the quality of the work was poor, it was just that we needed more time, perhaps more productive time. So we, we got two responses, and we put together an interview committee of those departments in town hall that use IT services extensively. And the unanimous selection was a company called Everlasting Design, which is an IT professional working out of Wood River Junction in Rhode Island. Dave Vernaglia is his name, and he has begun already to be a presence here. He'll be a presence in town hall tomorrow, and will begin very soon migrating all of our existing machines over to all the new wiring that was just installed through the grant. I've worked with David in the past. I solicited his activity in the bid process because I had worked with him and he had a great track record. He was able to solve a lot of difficult problems in Tiverton, so he was one of the bidders. The other bidder was an incumbent, you know, who's been working with our part-time administrator. They also did a very wonderful job putting together a proposal. In the end, we're looking for sort of a creative influence, more of a chief technology officer than somebody who's simply gonna fix our day-to-day problems. You know, my, my screen doesn't work. We needed somebody to be more thoughtful about the overall design of all of our infrastructure and to be very efficient about it. A lot of good steps have been taken. Our network has been flattened, we've been trying to update the infrastructure. All of our servers are now, except one possibility, all our servers are running 2012, they've been converted up from 2003. So for a little town, they're making real strides, but I think David's the right person. Which brings me to my next topic, which is training. One of the things I liked about David's presentation on IT was that engaging directly with us as users of the system is probably the most important thing we can do for cybersecurity, is to avoid user error. And David did a lot of training in Tiverton and actually helped us prevent this significant ransomware situation where the employee was not computer savvy, saw something she didn't recognize in the computer and did exactly what she had been trained to do, which was unplug it from the internet and stop it quickly. But those simple little things in a one-hour training can save us thousands of dollars. And so I just thought it was real effective, so that is a training that will be rolled out as we go along. And I'll give the chief's credit, we're gonna be starting this week with Incident Command System Training for Level 300, right? Starts tomorrow, for how many staff are attending?
We've got people from the school, different principals.
We're pretty much gonna fill most of this room.
And then, yeah, 25 in the class and the max. Some people from across Massachusetts, but we probably got at least 10, 12 in the class.
So Level 300 is one of the, sort of, it's not an advanced class, it's a mid-level class. It is required of all people who are gonna participate in emergency operations centers as well as direct, you know, first responders who are on incident. Who are going to be, and I always confuse 300 and 400, one is resource allocation, the other is documentation. Both trainings are essential. I'm glad that this is being rolled out here because it's gonna equip us with the knowledge of the terms and of all of the things that have to be done after the fact with FEMA to get reimbursed. They've become more and more difficult in terms of reimbursing local municipalities for emergency response if the training wasn't in place and decisions were made without the benefit of their priority system. So that's what's rolling out in terms of training. Couple of initiatives that came from the override conversation, I just want to update you quickly on health insurance and school transportation. On health insurance, there's a.
I need to excuse myself for one moment, I'll be right back. I need to get that. It's been a long meeting. Very sorry.
I'll go as quick as I can, Mr. Chairman.
I know.
There's a nascent effort to explore the possibilities of a joint purchasing group in Worcester County. It's one of the few counties that does not go to the market with the municipalities banding together to get good quotes from the carriers or to self-insure. And right now, we're kind of on that path of exploration with self-insurance as an option if you can get enough communities to join and become members. Self-insurance, you need a good enough body of beneficiaries to spread the risk and bring costs down. And then the key conversation then is where do you put the attachment points for reinsurance? So that you're, you're not going to face the huge claims, the huge claims will be covered by the reinsurer. It really is the Dudley, Charlton School District that is really leading the charge here. They, they need options, and they invited the other communities to a meeting, and I attended along with Uxbridge, Millbury, Southbridge. I'm gonna forget the name, Webster. So a lot of our surrounding communities were present and begun this dialogue. There's a lot of moving parts to self-insurance, and so we're gonna try to refine what we're talking about before we bring it to our boards of selectmen. But it is being done in other parts of the Commonwealth with some success, so.
Valley Tech expressed any interest in that.
Well, I would like to have that as a bargaining chip with them, that, you know, they can't keep passing costs on and not participating in ways to reduce costs. On the school transportation side, very, I'll be more brief here, it's a very complicated issue. We were talking during the override conversation about having to get control of that account. We are going out to bid this year, and it will be an item where we focus on cost reduction. I've heard some things about the, some of the examples we've used that have been explored. There are actually some questions about some of the legalities and some of the operational cost-effectiveness. May not have panned out over a longer period of time as well as it did in the beginning. So there's, because the, the special needs population changes so radically every year. You may have a perfect solution in year one, in year two, you pick up a couple of students and their needs are totally different, and now it's not as cost-effective as it was before. Again, it's a very expensive item, so it's worthy of exploration. My last thing, I just wanted to remind you that there's an ongoing process for the conversion of our streetlights to LEDs. I was authorized by you to just, you know, keep signing the documents and pushing the process forward. We signed our agreement with MAPSIE this week for the selection of a vendor that will now do the design work for us. And we still expect to be making changes to the streetlights in town by this late fall, mid to late fall. That's a long report, but after three meeting dates, we've been doing.
Appreciate it.
I have one thing before you close for CONCOM. Remember, I sent you out an email today saying that we had one other person that was interested?
Yes.
She just came in with her application, if you wanna.
Come on out.
Entertain it or not?
Yeah.
Katie Grace Dudley, right?
When someone was Main Street.
Do you want me to make copies of it, or do you want us to pass it around?
So, yeah, I was actually interested in CONCOM ever since I moved back from undergrad, but I figured I should do open space first and get experience in that to go to CONCOM. And now it's like eight years later, and I never got around to making that move. And then I noticed that there was like a huge cry for members on CONCOM, so I said, oh, well, this is clearly the time to go do that. So you'll see in the thing, my background is in engineering, unfortunately not civil engineering. I have a cousin that does that, who's also considering CONCOM, but she's up in Lowell right now. So, I mean, I had an interest in environmental going into undergrad. I ended up graduating with a general engineering degree, which kind of covers all of those. And then I got a master's in robotics engineering, which is not wetlands at all.
No, but it's really cool.
It is cool. It's cool.
Can have those block battles.
Exactly, just like that.
Right, I work in New London, Connecticut, at Electric Boat, they do the submarines. Again, not wetlands at all, but, I mean, there's no conflict of interest there. I had interest in wetlands, I remember when I was at high school, I did, there was like a whole big push to study vernal pools, and I was into that. And I tried to do some environmental independent studies. And I'm obviously for, to be on the committee, I'm more than willing to read up what all the bylaws and laws are pertaining to wetlands. There's, there's, it's a whole thing, I mean, it's a whole career wealth of knowledge there, I understand that I have to catch up on.
We have a conservation agent that'll help with that as well.
You learn as you go. Great, that sounds good.
Just your willingness to sit on the commission is, is a big plus. Just your willingness to sit on the commission is a big plus.
Yeah, I have to admit that, like, I said, wow, I should sit in on a few of these before I go, and I sat in on one, and I'm like, oh my goodness, are they ever going to leave? Are we ever going to go home? So my understanding, though, is that there's a cutoff at like 9:00 p.m.? The meeting can't go past 9:00 p.m.?
That's the town meeting.
Oh, that's the town meeting. You can go all night.
There's been some marathon ones, I've heard.
Yeah, the one I went to, I couldn't handle it anymore. I got to, I think it was 9:30 encroaching on 10:00 o'clock, and I was like, I need to sleep. So I think that would be my only reservation, is if they end up going to like 11:00.
No, in all honesty, may I?
You absolutely may.
What we're really hoping for is to reconstitute this board with members who are respectful of the process and demand of staff, a manageable agenda, and get through all of the posted items, and to not have people bringing in engineering staff and other experts that are very expensive to sit through that long meeting and then not even get to present.
Right, yeah.
And at the same time, yeah, the productivity has to be there, so if a second meeting is necessary, the membership needs to be willing to step up, have that second meeting and clear it. Because if the two meetings are manageable, it's not an egregious assumption on your time.
That's not a huge thing, yeah, no.
Right, but it's also more respectful of the people who, who really need the permits to proceed with their projects.
Certainly, I mean, the one I've been to and ones I've watched on video, I've seen people standing there the entire time without their, their items getting covered. So I totally understand the need to rework that agenda, that.
Yeah, I think it just needs a little more, like, guidance and direction and, and one discipline behind the agendas themselves. And, you know, I think new membership definitely brings that in.
As part of the town's economic development efforts and being business-friendly, the Conservation Commission is one area that we want things to move along. Now, you'd have to give it a thorough review, but again, as Matt said, have an expensive staff and not take any action.
Right, oh, absolutely.
And how do you feel about Eagle Scouts?
I watched that one. It was painful. It was absolutely painful.
Had to ask. It's kind of a pet peeve of mine.
Right answer.
Right answer.
Okay. I mean, I understand some of those concerns may have been legitimate, but I feel like they could have been presented in, in less than 10 minutes.
Well, you sound like a very frank person, and I think that you would be a good addition to the...
So I would recommend you, so you would appoint her for a term ending 2021.
So moved.
She looks nervous right there.
There we go.
For the remainder of her natural life.
I'm sorry, who made the second? Tim.
Tim.
All right, so it was made in seconded. Is there any further discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Absolutely, yeah, no, I figured you guys didn't want to have to wait for another meeting.
No, we didn't.
Thanks.
We picked up two new people on ConCom today.
Heck of a roster.
All right, so do we have any old business?
And I, just a thought came to me today, Matt, how long have you been with us? Has it been approaching a year?
Yeah, 359 days, something like that.
Who's counting?
I don't know what it's like, or if it's in their contract or what, but every year the board would evaluate you or provide feedback of some sort. I just want to put that on our radar, that as we enter the close to a year, that we have the opportunity to, to do that. And certainly, don't think there's anything to worry about. I just think, though, that we should keep that process going.
I would have to, I agree, we should have that on the next agenda. I mean, unfortunately, it'll be past his year mark at that point. I'm not shy. I'll be honest with you, I'll go on record and say you've been a godsend to Douglas. Hands down the single best choice in a candidate that, that we could ever ask for. I give a lot of props to the, to the committee that actually sat down and interviewed with all of you guys.
Me and Dave, me and Dave.
And I'll be, I'll be square with you. Matt, you've been nothing but stellar since the day you sat in the seat, going through a horrific budget process, a tenuous two-and-a-half override campaign, I guess is the easiest way that we look at it. Through a town meeting, working with, you know, our tragically French fire chief as a department head. But you've, you've, you've definitely hit the mark, you hit the ground running, and I think you were the, the breath of fresh air that, that Douglas desperately needed in a time that we desperately needed it.
I'd advise some caution here. You pump them up too much, we're going to lose them.
You're horrible, sit over there.
No, I personally want to thank you for all of the hours, all of the work, all of the accessibility that you've had to this board and, and all the work.
Intelligence, too.
Yeah.
As well as hard work.
Agreed.
And imagination.
And perspective.
All humor aside, I agree on a fact.
I appreciate all of that. I think I want to circulate some goals to the board, too. I think we've only scratched the surface of some of the things that we need to do and that are accessible to us to accomplish. We don't need to do all...
You've got our old goals, right, that we've done?
I might look at them. I'll just say, and to encapsulate it, one of my personal, professional goals is to, is to take a community into GFOA certification for its budget process, which is, that's Government Finance Official Association, review of all of the budget process for transparency, accuracy, forward-thinking. So we, the major component that needs to be completed this year in order to be able to apply for that status is a five-year capital plan that is modeled after some of the best practices, and the Collins Center put together a great template for the town of Munson, which I've been reviewing. We end up not taking a single word of it because it's a very different town, actually. We might be similar in many ways, but basically, once you have a five-year budget plan and a five-year capital improvement plan, you can really begin to, you have, you have what you're shooting to beat is established in the transparent process that the public can engage in, but now you're trying to beat the goals that you set. And it's a great way of doing things, and very few communities in Massachusetts have that distinction. And I'm trying to, trying to bring Douglas up to that. My other personal goal, although it doesn't involve much work for me, is to be as supportive as I can of the police department in its quest for accreditation. I think we're talking about presenting very soon, either in Au, was it September that you felt comfortable with?
Yeah, I think so. It would be, would give you a good idea of where we're at with the booze and regs, court of conduct, and where we are in the accreditation process, so.
So those would be the...
Working on a lot of documents.
Those are the two big ones for this year that I see, but we'll, we'll flush this out in much more detail as we go along.
All right, so do we have any new business?
See, we recognize Mr. Bonner for his improved beard.
Yeah, he's looking all right over there.
Looking, looking pretty handsome over there with that nice beard there.
I think Hal's got a little man pressure on him.
I wake up every day knowing Hal that...
Just don't get close to me, you might Velcro each other.
Boy, there's an image right there.
On that note, Mr. Chairman...
Add Mr. Us into the thing.
I would wonder if you would enter in, yeah. I wonder if you would consider a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of considering real property, specifically the Old Grammar School, and to also discuss the firefighter collective bargaining issue, and then to leave executive session for the purpose of adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Made by, I'm going to give that, that was made by Tim and Mike, because he just did a so move.
Well, I asked that to be considered.
It is being considered.
Yes.
All right, and it's been seconded, so all those in favor?
No, no, no.
Roll call vote. I was that close.
That close. Roll call vote.
Cortez, aye.
Snagged from the Hal Davis side.
The Velcro thing threw me off. What do you want me to do? It's a roll call, I think Dave went.
Hal Davis, aye.
Kevin Moore, aye.
Tim Bonner, aye.
Mike Hughes, aye.